I pledge allegiance to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under common, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I'm chairman of the motion to adopt the amendment. Just note that there is an addendum item on the agenda, but it is as presented. So if you want to adopt this one.
All right, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
All right, moving into presentations, superintendent report, Dr. Rimsley.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Good afternoon from your friends at our CPS. I did also just want to preface this by saying that it's tough to do a quick overview of everything that happens in school business, and I know some people like to hear as much as possible at some of these meetings, but I do want to remind people that the school board meetings are second Tuesday of every month at 6:30 PM, and we do delve really deep into some of those issues that I hear people bringing up. And Luke does a great job of recording those meetings as well, so you can tune in later. But I'll give you a quick overview of the past month. I'll begin with a matter of critical importance, which I know you've probably heard a lot about. It's been critical to our operations and safety of our students and staff. Over the past several weeks, we have experienced multiple power outages and voltage surges that have significantly disrupted school operations and caused substantial damage to essential systems throughout our facilities. The financial impact has been staggering with insurance claims. This was prior to the most recent surge is exceeding $130,000 over the past year alone. Most critically, these power issues forced early dismissals on multiple occasions when failures compromised our water systems and HVAC operations. We cannot maintain safe school operations without functioning water systems and restroom facilities. The severity of these incidents required us to release students early when water pressure at RCES dropped below 20 PSI, making toilets inoperable. We were even forced to cancel our Veterans Day parade to minimize water usage in an attempt to keep students in school for the period of time we did. HVAC technicians inspecting our systems indicated that incoming voltage levels appear excessively high and are systematically damaging our equipment, suggesting a fundamental problem with power supply from Rappahannock Electric Cooperative that extends beyond what surge protectors can reasonably mitigate. I would like to take a moment, though, to thank Mr. Curry for his advocacy on our behalf, and I am pleased to report that REC has responded professionally and proactively to our concerns. Their team conducted comprehensive inspections of every pole with qualified line workers and drone inspections with high-resolution cameras. Their investigation determined that both major outages were caused by weather-related events, fallent trees during storms on November 6th and November 11th. REC is making targeted equipment upgrades to strengthen the system against future weather impacts and has committed to working directly with our facilities team to ensure our site is equipped with appropriate voltage protection devices. While I'm grateful for REC's responsiveness and partnership, the financial burden to our insurance program and the repeated replacement costs for damaged equipment, never mind the inconvenience to families like we were talking about, remains significant concerns that we will continue to monitor closely. We cannot operate with a system that surges anytime a tree falls in Rappahannock County. But despite these operational challenges, November was filled with remarkable achievements and meaningful experiences for our students. RCHS held its annual Veterans Day assembly on November 11th on time in the morning with retired U.S. Navy Commander Andy Nichols, serving as a special guest speaker. Our students came together to honor veterans in powerful ways at RCES, which was a postponed annual Veterans Day parade on November 21st, where veterans walked through the hallways with their proud students while classes gathered to cheer them on. The parade concluded with a patriotic performance as students sang "America the Beautiful and My Country 'Tis of Thee," and Bobby Glasker collaborated with Ms. Kelby Saffington in that performance. Students then welcomed the American Legion Freedom Riders on motorcycles, creating a wonderful morning dedicated to honoring those who have served. Our career and tech ed programs continue to provide invaluable real-world experiences. Twenty-four RCHS students participated in senior mock interviews after completing resume writing and interview skills workshops. Thank you to our community volunteers, Case Dutil, Andrew Chavat, Debbie Massey, and Steph Ritter for sharing their time and expertise. Michael Appleton also visited RCHS, who is CEO of Appleton Campbell, spoke to our students, interested students at November trade of the month, inspiring them about opportunities in the trades. Career investigation students visited the Sperryville Rescue Squad and interviewed business owners along Main Street in Sperryville, gaining valuable insight into career pathways and community partnerships. College and career exploration remained a priority, with 16 juniors and seniors participating in an overnight college trip, visiting Christopher Newport, William &amp; Mary, and VCU. Students toured the Veterinary Technology Center at Blue Ridge Community College, learning about program requirements and facilities, and even our fifth-grade students explored various careers through the My Future lessons provided through our partnership with Family Futures, researching requirements and learning about opportunity costs. Dr. Mary Jane Boynton, RCHS principal, successfully completed the CASE Special Education Leadership Institute, joining only 34 administrators chosen nationwide to participate in this year's cohort. This national professional learning program strengthens special education leadership and advances equitable systems of supports for students with disabilities. We are proud to announce a new partnership with Rappahannock County Community Education, RAPCE, I mean, Rappahannock, RAPCE, I always want to call it RAPU, RAP University, but the RAP Center for Education, offering a 12-week Microsoft Agentic AI Academy beginning this January. This innovative program will prepare high school students and community members for two official Microsoft certification exams, providing globally-recognized credentials and opening pathways to technology careers through cultivating citizen developers. On our Hot Topics page, you can find a Soup Scoop podcast where I interviewed innovator and instructor George Bedar and RAPCE Executive Director Jamie Davis about this amazing opportunity. If interested, I encourage you to apply, to register for this as this pilot course is being offered at a fraction of the course of what the subsequent courses will be offered at. If you are able to, if you were able to attend the Rack Fall Art Tour, I hope you noticed the beautiful student artwork that was showcased, including the Where I'm From collage art quilt from RCES and the Bigger Picture from RCHS students. These murals can be visited at the Washington School through December 12th. As we approach the holiday season, I am grateful for the resiliency of our students and staff and the partnership of our board supervisors and support of our entire community. Together, we continue our journey on the road to remarkable, and I'd also like to take a point of personal privilege to sincerely thank both Christine Smith and Van Carney for your service, your dedicated service to this board and this community, and especially the families and children of Rappahannock County. It's been a privilege to work with you both.
Thanks, Janet.
Thanks for the overview of the incident with the power surges, and obviously, there's been a lot going on with wind and dry weather and fires. I know there was a fire recently not too far from the high school that was a result of power lines contacting tree branches. So I get all of that, and I appreciate all the background information on potential losses, insurable losses, and your pursuit of insurance, insurance-based reimbursements of losses. I guess one question I have is, we've set up, we've set up an emergency shelter with a generator, and that emergency shelter, as Mr. Curry recently pointed out during a community public safety meeting, is rarely, if ever, used, and it's a big deal to invoke it, so to speak, as a usable facility because of the, you know, all the details of using it for that purpose in an emergency situation. But it occurs to me that a lot of the public concern about the school basically shutting down, I don't, I don't recall what time of day it was, if it was late morning, early afternoon, but given the, given the not insignificant infrastructure investment that has been made to allow for this emergency shelter to be there if needed, recognizing that many families, at least from what I've seen in the newspaper and social media, et cetera, were hugely inconvenienced from a childcare and scheduling perspective, why would you not recognize the logistical pinch that an event like this would place on families, single parents or two-working parents with children that frankly can only come home at a certain time of day? Why would you not have used the gymnasium with the generator to keep people, keep students in school so as not to put families in a real bind? Setting aside what happened, and it's certainly out of your control, and it seems like REC has been responsive, but I guess my fundamental question is, why didn't you draw on some of your infrastructure resources in that particular situation? And then finally, what would you have done differently, given, given the frustration from the community? And I know these, I know it's a hard thing to navigate, and I, as always, appreciate everything you do, but it just seems like there might have been a better, better way on that particular day.
Oh, no, I understand that, and we've talked a lot about that, moving, you know, 550 students to a different area, but then it's more than just childcare that we have to offer and managing that with the personnel we have and facilities and those pieces. It's always a balance between, between that. So it does take a lot of collaboration. I am very open to that, and that's a conversation we've been having, especially since we're narrowed down to one childcare facility in the community. So, you know, we were just talking, Ms. Smith brought up two churches and anyone else that can help support that, because it's a, it's a heavy draw for, for teachers to move the students, then manage those students in an open space other than, I mean, it's, there's liability issues, there's contract issues, there's a lot of logistical things that we, you know, not to say we couldn't. However, I am optimistic that this should get under control when the generator at the elementary school, which we do not have yet, is put in place, and that's been causing a lot of issues. So hopefully December, we're hoping that gets, no, it doesn't look like December anymore. Well, when that gets installed, that should help offset these things. But we are openly, open to collaborating with other organizations that can potentially help us with that challenge.
Is there an active effort to put in a, put in a specific plan on how you'd address a situation like this in the future? Is there, are you working on a revision of your policy?
The school plan is what we're following. The school plan is if a building has not workable facilities that the health department can come in and close you, that we have to close. That's what our plan currently says. However, if there were another organization to partner with us, a grant, we might be able to get it to, it's a lot of moving pieces that, to provide childcare for, for parents that can't work out emergency situations. I understand that, I'm one too, and it can be a very huge inconvenience, and I share their frustrations very much with these closures, so hopefully we could have more resources available to, to potentially step up and say, hey, we could open up in that case. We do have a lot of other facilities, especially, I do love the idea of the churches opening up and saying, hey, we can offer something for these if this happens, and, but that's going to be sort of a difference.
So, along those lines, it's my understanding that, that, you know, a lot of equipment failure on behalf, on REC's equipment failure is then impacting our equipment. Is that the case?
Well, we received some information at the school board meeting, which I was very happy that a representative came to our school board meeting that day. That was wonderful.
I emailed him and thanked him.
You did too, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you for the advocacy. That was, that was helpful, and it did appear like that the equipment didn't act the way it was intended.
Okay.
So they are making some adjustments to that, hopefully, and Mr. Curry, I know you understand it probably a little bit better than I do, but some of those systems, they are changing. It just seemed like the wildfire and the issues that had happened really did do a number to the grid that serves our school board office and our elementary school in particular.
So a lot, and, so along kind of Mr. Woodson's train of thought, but slightly different, you know, I inquired, and since January of 2024, there have been three closures, three full-day closures, and basically three, either early closures or two-hour delay. And I added that, that is about 32 hours of instructional time for, on behalf of our school system, which anybody with kids knows that disruption to a routine, that will mess a kid up, especially these in November, that, they've probably messed those kids up until 2026, right? You know, they're all excited. But looking at that a little bit deeper, you know, based on, based on Rappahannock's living wage calculator, that cost our county residents roughly $158,000. So I'm having a hard time, not a hard time, because Mr. Henry was ve, he is, like I said, I emailed him and he was on it, and I'm very happy that he is our guy. But I do think REC needs to recognize a certain amount of responsibility in this, especially when they serve over 5,000 people in our 7,000-person county. It, it just, I, I think it is time that, you know, the conversation is, is a little bit more than our polls adequate, because we were hearing about polls in January of 2024, and then just in October of this year, we're, you know, we were being told to brace ourselves that brownouts could be in the future and whatnot. So I think this is a much bigger problem than, than childcare certainly, but $158,000, you know, is no, is nothing to, you know, just shrug off. So I hope, like I said, I felt heard when Mr. Henry and I emailed a little bit, and he's normally, I'm surprised not to see him here today. He's one of the nicest men on the planet, so.
And they did bring a team to meet with us. Mr. Curry attended that with us, and, you know, it's, I think they're being as responsive as possible, and there's some adjustments they'll make. We'll see if that really does make a difference with the surges.
Right.
That have been causing this issue, but we're still dealing with some of them and trying to repair some of this equipment and doing the best we can. We, so, I mean, there are a few other things we're still managing. We were able to make some changes to open schools and keep it going, but it does a lot, and it takes time to fix some of these issues.
Exactly. The other thing that I wanted to comment on unrelated to the power outages and REC was, I just wanted to take a minute to commend Dr. Boynton. For anyone who's been, anyone who has had a child graduate high school in the last five years, know, they probably know the, how the AP, the dual enrollment, all of that stuff gets crazy hard to follow. What some people may not know is the governor over the summer made some dual enrollment changes, which greatly impacts, you know, the school curriculums, whatnot. So I just wanted to commend the work that you and Dr. Boynton and that team, Karen Ellis and Jody Place, have been doing. I follow, I watched that meeting, and having a kid in the middle of all that, having a kid who has had, you know, I know I'm talking to the choir here.
I know, too.
With AP classes and with honors classes and dual enrollment classes, and all of them with complicated implications, I just appreciate the time that they have spent kind of untangling some of that and, and making all of that more clear for parents, because it is quite complicated. I had a daughter graduate just in 2014, and you would think, I've never had a kid graduate from high school before trying to, to follow, follow all of this stuff. I don't, either the amnesia has set in or it really was not that difficult just 10 years ago. So I just wanted to commend that that was hard work, and I'm, I know it's continuing work, I know it's not done, but I appreciate them taking the bull by the horns and, and taking a deep dive.
Thank you.
I only really had what I spoke to Dr. Rimsley about before the meeting, which is that I had a lot of feedback on the, you know, missing, you know, three parts or holes of days within four days is very disruptive to people's and professional lives, and they certainly want to make sure that their children are well cared for in the course of their workday. It's really tough on those working families. And having been a working mom and seeing what my peers are going through, I know it's tough on them, and I know it's a utilities problem, and I get handling that part of it, I think that's super commendable, but I think it's also people, a challenge with people, and, you know, I would urge you to engage your students' parents for information and engage their needs and plan accordingly, because I do think that there are probably more needs out there than, than are now. So that's all I had to say, and thank you.
Do you have anything, Mr. Carney?
So the generator, when it gets hooked up, when it gets hooked up.
Yes.
Would make this situation different functionally, correct?
We hope so.
Like, so if you get a crazy power surge, generator will kick on, school can just go on.
Well, that was our understanding, and they have a great deal of surge protection built in, so you would hope that that would be the case. Unfortunately, this last surge caused us quite a bit of anxiety because it did blow past our school board office generator surge protection and blew quite a few of our systems there. So that made us say, okay, we've really got to get them in here to look at this, because this is not supposed to happen this way.
Was there anything else on account of being hit by this? Not that I'm aware of. I think the impacts were really local around where that fire was, and my understanding is the 34 and a half kilovolt line that runs on the top strand may have been impacted by a tree, came into contact with a 12.4 kilovolt line underneath it, and which then sends a lot more voltage into the transformers, into the buildings, and does a lot of crazy stuff. So if we have one of these events again, we have enough assurance that we have breakers in between that and the new generator, that it's not going to blow that out? Nothing's guaranteed. We, we have, at each instance, put in surge protection devices for this purpose and improved grounding, which helps. And REC has surge protection devices as well that they're, they inspected and are considering installing more. But when acts of God happened, I mean.
Yeah, yeah. The thing that's interesting, though, is the, and I brought this up to the REC team, is, you know, it's job nine years now, and the past year and a half is when I've noticed these things happening. So, you know, and I know there were some fire issues that happened last spring around March that we kind of noticed, but whatever was done in that timeframe to now, we've seen a lot more surging, even if it didn't blow the systems, there's been a lot more surging power, partial power issues. So I'm like, can somebody answer that question for me? And I appreciate any of the advocacy help from the supervisors on that front, too. So I thank you for your help there, because it makes it very difficult to operate anything with this issue.
Yeah, at least from a, from a tree cleanup perspective, that back pattern you just described where you're seeing more problems in the last 18 months doesn't square with REC's concerted effort to really clean rights away. And, I mean, I think we've all, all seen it in our, our different districts. I mean, they're very aggressive, spending a ton of money, so it's, it's unfortunate that, that despite all of that effort, we're still seeing these problems, but, you know, it's, I think it's a good reminder for all of us just to keep good open lines of communication with our REC reps, and, I mean, I said at a recent meeting, they really are terrific, and I know some of my colleagues have reinforced that today, and they, they do respond right away, no matter how small the outage, and so we'll just have to try to get some answers here. But I know that, that area where the fire occurred, that's, that, that area was hit both on the big wildfire day in March, and then hit again, and I know that REC's contractor was up there last week, early last week doing a lot of cleanup, so maybe that'll make a difference in that particular area. Anyway, we'll stay on it.
I appreciate that, thank you.
I do hope that REC is following behind some of these areas and looking at the cleanup, excuse me, because our volunteer fire department's the ones having to deal with the fires, and that's, you know, especially during the day when a lot of them work. So to me, I think REC can send them a thank you, because they're taking care of these fires, but I understand that trees grow taller than easements, and I appreciate that, but this seems to be happening more frequently in my mind, and I've had citizens ask me what's going on, because their generators are running more than they used to, so I'm just wondering if it's a bigger issue than we know.
Janet, I just wanted to say thank you for, this is my last day, as you pointed out, and I just wanted to thank you for working so hard to be at all of our meetings, which I know is a part of your job, but being forthright with us and working with us. We've had some interesting conversations over the past four years that have gone many different ways.
Yeah.
So genuinely, thank you for what you're doing for the schools, which I have always thought are the heart of our county and the backbone of our county, and for our community. Thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you so much. All right, thank you very much. Thank you. Happy holiday.
All right, next we have Penny Carter from the Food Pantry.
Hello. Hi. Penny Carter is board president of the Food Pantry. Thank you for having us. I have a couple of slides up here to describe the Food Pantry. Been in our new location here in Little Washington since June of 2024. This slide shows a breakdown of our population, shows households, adult counts duplicated. Our families can come twice a month. If they have children under the age of 17, they can come three times. So this duplicated count, it shows that, so, can you hear my eyes? It shows a good representation that 49% of our population are families of just one, okay? Because the majority of our population is actually, 35% of our population is over the age of 65, so it's really a very aged population that comes to the Food Pantry. I think that also correlates very much with our own population here in the county. The next largest group of that population is 27%, is of families of two, meaning they're families of generally husband and wives. Go to the next large group, 14% are families of three. Typically, these are actually single-family parents with one or two children, and then you're getting into the larger families. We have several groups of families that are large, of six or greater. So this is our families that come at least twice a month. When you bring up that next slide, you're looking at children and our families. So typically, again, you're looking at 64% of the families have no children at all. You're looking at the next group of 15 showing at least one child in the family, and then that gets a little bit smaller. So again, you're looking at the majority of the families that come into the Food Pantry are typically older families, older people, and they don't have children. The third slide there is looking at the unique size. This is the family that comes just once, we're looking at the sizes of, that are coming just one time a month. Again, you're looking at the sizes of the families are about 41%, are just one, one size. Really, the biggest way to be able to look at the number is the number of that last slide is looking at how our volumes have changed over the last couple of years. If you go back to 2020, that was showing the beginning of COVID, and our numbers at the total household visits and then the number of individual visits, these are pretty low in 2020. We did stay open through 2020. I had just joined as a volunteer during that year, so our number of house- So our number of households were kind of small, but they did come a lot of visits during that time. And what we did during COVID were, uh, was that we closed down the actual pantry and clients showed up, um, as, uh, the outside in their cars. They gave us a, a, a shopping list. We provided with them and we went in and shopped as volunteers and brought the groceries out to them. So it was a no shop, no contact kind of situation here. In twenty twenty-one, we opened up again in the spring where they are allowed to come in and shop. But remember in twenty twenty-one, we still had COVID re- um, payments to families. So they had a little pocket of money that was coming to them that improved their budget at home. So they weren't using the pantry as much as they'd had in, during, uh, COVID, pre-COVID in twenty twenty. So we found that our volume was a little bit lower. By the end of twenty twenty-two, that COVID money was going away. So our volume numbers went up a little bit by twenty twenty-two. And we were back into opening the pantry and the, and the clients were coming into us. By twenty twenty-three, all that COVID money was gone and our volumes went up. But we didn't see very much change really in our families. We did not open the, um, pantry here in Little Washington until twenty twenty-four. We saw a big bump when we opened in June of twenty twenty-four. That increased quite a bit with our pantry. I talked to Debbie when she was helping us do, uh, the giveaways on Thursday. And I had a slide which evaporated into no man's land, uh, which was a good slide that showed, it was a pie chart that showed the, uh, varied, uh, addresses within our county and the, the percentage of where our, our uh, clients came. And I'm going to put patients in there all the time because I was a nurse for forty years and I apologize for that. Clients, families. So, um, it was very interesting to look at that slide. It was just under forty percent of our families came from the Amosville area. The other thirty-five percent came from, um, Sperryville and Boston. And then you had about thirty percent that came from Flint Hill and, um, Chester Gap. And just about ten percent in the Washington, um, zip code. I found that slide to be very interesting because I thought that, um, our, our people that put together, um, Chuck Ockery, who donated the land from Rush River and the people who did the, um, what I call the three Johns, John Anderson, John Sullivan and John Jackman. And then of course, our pres- our past president Noel Lang, our, uh, the people who did our, uh, Capitol campaign was very forthright in thinking that this was the right location to be, right in the center of the county. Because that allows our families to come together at a central location. And it really takes away the burden of anyone to travel more than about ten or twelve miles to get to us. And I think that's very important. I also think it's very important that our location, um, Rick Lassard adding his, um, free time to be able to do our uh, architect and putting together our current, uh, location in our pantry. Uh, it allows a very home-like situation. We have so many wonderful volunteers. You have the right to choose a choose-based shopping experience. It takes away the stigma of, of coming to, uh, shop. It provides also, I've seen so often people that come to shop for the first time, within a couple of visits, they're bringing another friend. So I think the pantry really allows the opportunity for our clients and our families within the county to have a warm, friendly and an open op- opportunity to be able to shop for the things that they need. The, I, I, I think this pretty much ex- explains what we're doing in the pantry. We've had a lot of new volunteers come in, uh, the last couple of weeks with the change in the SNAP and the USDA. Uh, people have answered our call. Uh, we have new people coming into the county. They see our Facebook messages. A lot of people have answered the call with the change of SNAP and USDA. We've had community members donate, um, to our, our pantry that never donated before. We have churches answering our call. One of the churches helped us with our Thanksgiving giveaway and donated a boatload of foil pans because we found last year, as I was handing out turkeys, no one had the ability to cook that turkey. So this year we gave foil pans aluminum foil to actually cook the turkeys in. Something that seems very logical to us because we go to the grocery store every day. But that doesn't seem logical to someone who's maybe cooking the turkey for the first time. So things that just make it easy for our families, make it comfortable for them are things that we're thinking and trying to problem solve together. The other thing that's, I think, is wonderful for us, we've had a lot of people stop by and visit the pantry from other areas, is that we are very lucky and fortunate to have the PATH Foundation and the opportunity to, uh, write grants to other places. Um, some of the grants that we have and the things that we have and offer in our pantry, uh, we have a grant for, um, a healthy home. Uh, that's through the Northern Piedmont Grant. And that, we provide, um, uh, dish detergent. And my theory behind that is if I'm going to send food home to a family, I want them to have a clean kitchen. Laundry detergent so that you have the dignity of offering clean clothes to your family and clean clothes to go to work. We have a feminine care or, and a, a, a personal care grant that allows people to have feminine care products and health, um, uh, personal care products. Because we have a one mother who has three teenage daughters in her family. That's fifty dollars that she's saving out of her pocket every month and that goes to her electric bill, I know. So things that we can offer in terms of writing grants and getting the products that we need in our pantry is very, very important. And that helps to make sure that not only food is given to our families, but that we're offering things that they need to make their family meet the needs within their homes. And that's why we're not just, um, called a food pantry, but a pantry, things that meet the needs that they have. So those are the things that we're doing. And we hope that you're more than welcome to come by and visit anytime. Do you have any questions for me?
Penny, thanks a lot. Thanks for all you do. Um, I just wonder if you could, at a relatively high level, talk about the Food Pantry's financial condition, um, in terms of just in general's fine. Uh, we don't need to get in the weeds, but cash on hand, um, prospects for, for the future, two, three years down the road. Do you feel like you're solvent? And where do you see challenges that might, um, strain you like any other institution is being strained right now?
So I'll talk about the strain first. Um, the strain was having USDA kind of close the doors almost, uh, for the last couple of months. Um, so to talk about that for just a second, USDA has, um, no meat products, um, on hand at the moment. That's been that way for, uh, almost two months now. So we're relying on all local protein. And the, that right now is really significant for us compared to other food pantries. Again, I go back to the, uh, PATH Foundation grant that we received earlier this year. And that actually is something that we're really proud that we have because what we've done is, uh, we've worked with, uh, local farmers. And we use, uh, we do a payback pro- program where we work with local farmers and we purchase local protein, pork and beef, and we keep that in our pantry. So we were looking forward in the forefront for that. And we are proud of that because we're purchasing local, that we feel like we're getting the right protein and local protein and good protein in the pantry. And we are putting that money right back into the farmer's pocket and our community. And we all know that the farmers are not the richest people in our county. So we're really proud of that fact. That particular grant is a four-year grant that will be rotating for us. And we're really, really excited about that. The other part of that is, um, the USDA also decreased their options of purchasing from them. Uh, again, uh, what we did was we had some funds on hand, again, from a PATH Foundation grant and some of our own funds. And we were able to supplement that. And so we, uh, we have a really good staff that was able to go in and process that, um, very well. I'll also mention that we have a great executive director, Georgina Griffith-Gates, who is working with us. She came on board this summer and she's been really good about setting up some structure. Uh, we were the little engine that could, but our, our train track needed some work. So she is, uh, phenomenal at what she's doing right now. So we're really proud of her. We just brought on a new operations um, director in the back who's working on ordering and that sort of thing. And of course, we still have Laura Lucas, who is wonderful in working with the community members and the volunteers. Our money funds, I'll talk about that for a little bit. We're actually doing pretty well. I want to say that we've had really good donations and we've managed our funds very well over the last couple of years. Uh, we're looking at, um, diversing those a little bit better, um, in the near future. And, um, I want to say that in the past, we, we've done a good job at that. I think we'll look a little bit more in the future at, um, doing a little more work in our fundraising. We've just been kind of kind of muddling along a little bit, just like all the other nonprofits. But I think we are going to look a little harder at that because we want to just make sure that we're a little more prepared for the future because we, we've done well, but we don't want to fall off our cliff. So we're certainly aware of what we need to do. And that's, um, kind of Georgina's bag. Uh, she does, she comes from a background of doing great fundraising. And I think we're good now, but we want to be better. So we certainly know what we need to do.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your report. And, uh, it is definitely a, a well, um, honed process now from when I was at Sperryville helping hand out food to this event. Um, it was so organized and so structured that it made it easy for everyone. And I think that's why volunteers don't mind volunteering.
Thank you. And it's wonderful to see everyone. And also, it's, it's really nice to see, um, there's a lot of kids that came out to volunteer. So it's, um, I find it very energizing and, and very touched to my heart because it's, it's, um, it's all, of course, all generations, which I think is very important. Um, because you want to be able to give that back to, to make sure that your families see that too. So thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Rapid Home had something come up that, um, will be presenting to us in January. Um, next we have, um, Sheri, are you on the RCWSA?
Good afternoon. Uh, Josh Savvy, the newest member of the RCWSA Board. Sheri Woodard.
Let me just say, he's been a great friend for us.
Are you having fun?
He's our new treasurer and he's doing a great job.
Thank you. Oh, yeah. Tons of fun.
Yes. And when we, when we got the agreement to get the loan for one point four million dollars, which was quite an achievement, there was a, an agreement that we become every December. But we started sending you information on a month basis. So I don't think anything much should be a surprise. We're really happy with the, um, we're now actually seeing things happen. So it's been a lot of work getting ready. And Josh is going to take us through the budget process, which is what's required at this December meeting.
Great. Thanks, Sheri. Um, do you mind opening the file? Great. So, um, we had previously adopted a fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget. Um, that's shown there. We just, in our last, uh, meeting in November, adopted and amended fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget. Um, a couple notable items is, um, we're projecting a little bit higher revenue. That's as a result of the board's decision in April to increase the monthly EDU cost to eighty-eight dollars per EDU. The previously adopted budget forecasted an eighty-one, um, dollar and eighteen cent, uh, EDU charge. Um, expenditures in our operating budget have increased slightly. This was just a result as, as expenses came in, they were slightly higher. But, you know, it's, it's about six thousand dollars. Uh, the capital budget shows a good number of changes. And this is because our amended fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget takes into account the, um, the plant improvement project and the EQ tank, as well as we had some unforeseen, um, expenses. The forced sewer line, um, replacement at the schoolhouse property, as well as, um, uh, sewer pipe on the Estes Mill Bridge needing to be fixed as a result of the storm we had earlier this year. Uh, going forward, um, for fiscal year twenty twenty-seven, we're projecting the, or we adopted our budget with the same monthly EDU costs. Um, expenditures are really just inflationary adjustments. Um, and then in terms of the capital budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, we had initially anticipated making some improvements to the collection system as well as the pump systems. We've taken that out of the budget for this year just because of the unexpected expenses. And we've added that into fiscal year twenty twenty-seven as well as, um, putting in twenty thousand dollars for unexpected maintenance expenses. But, um, happy to answer any questions.
Josh, what's the, uh, just, uh, this might just be a function of the, of the budget template you're using. But I'm just curious about the line above debt service, which says proceeds for projects. I'm just wondering what that is and, um, what it, what's supposed to be represented there?
Yeah, so it, it's probably a holdover that doesn't need to exist any longer. In the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget, when the authority received the one point four million dollar loan, it would have been
It would have hit that.
Hit that. Yeah. And since it's, it's already hit, like, I mean, to the extent the authority was ever to take out another loan, that would show up there.
Okay. And then I think the key question that we have for you, which would be worthwhile for you to answer affirmatively, so we have it on the record. You are to notify us if your, um, revenue is insufficient to cover the debt burden that you've assumed. So can you confirm that under your current financial condition and circumstances, be able to shoulder the full debt burden that you took on as an authority with, with our support?
Co- correct. Yeah, we can confirm that. And that is what this debt service coverage ratio is. I think under the terms of the loan, it needs to be one point one five. Um, is my understanding, we're projecting one point five seven for the amended budget, one point four. Um, so showing that, that revenue will exceed expenses, you know, plus debt service.
Okay.
Thank you, Josh. Um, did you, so you guys got that, um, pipe fixed from the schoolhouse?
That work is done. Yep.
Awesome. What, what, was that eighty-four thousand?
Uh, it was. I think it's actually in here.
Cause I know you and I had spoken about that and it was, your original quote was a little higher than that. So it looks like you got it down a little bit.
Yeah, it, it was a little bit higher. Um, W- Will would have to fill you in on the details of how that adjustment happened, but, um, it was eighty-four thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars.
Good work.
Excellent.
I think the biggest problem that we face is this upcoming, any kind of floods, like what we saw Brothers Road, the total collapse, all those things, it's hard to budget for. But right now, we're very pleased with what we're, with that going.
Going back to the schoolhouse question, um, and I know this was always a perennial, perennial question and there was never a clear answer. I'm just curious if you have a clear answer now. Operationally, where do you draw the line on, um, your subscribers' responsibility for repairs? And what, what the authority itself is obligated to take on? You know, I, it, it always surprised me that that was even a question open for debate and discussion. I'm just curious, uh, using the schoolhouse incident or failure as an example, what have you all concluded? And is this written cleanly now in policy documents? Where you're, you know what you're required to fix and what your subscribers are required to fix?
Right. So under the authority's rules and regulations, the tank, the pumps are generally the authority's responsibility, as well as the, the lines that go from those tanks. So long as it is a quote unquote existing connection, which an existing connection is defined as, um, connections that, um, were on the system prior to some date in twenty fourteen. I don't remember the exact date. If it's a connection after that, it, it would be the customer's responsibility for the tanks, the pumps. Um, but I think in the instance of the, the forced main line and in any situation, that would be the authority's responsibility. But it is documented in the, the rules and regulations.
And, um, sorry to jump around. Uh, it looked like you had up there an excerpt from your general ledger. And I just wonder, or, uh, just previously, am I correct that, am I correct now that all of your, your accounting functions are being handled by the county treasurer's office?
That's correct.
And can you comment on how that's going for you all?
I, I think it's been going great. We get timely information, it's organized. Yeah, it's, it's working very well.
Debbie, Nick and Bonnie have been incredible.
Great. Well, I, yeah, and I'm, I'm frankly, I'm glad that Well, I, yeah, and I'm, I'm frankly, I'm glad that, that we're using those resources to benefit you all and by extension, your subscribers, because I think it should reduce your own operating expenses to bring that into the county fold, hopefully. And I definitely want to thank Debbie and Bonnie for their efforts there because I, you have a lot of money coming and going and it's, sending bills out and collecting is not for the faint of heart, so.
No, they've both been terrific.
Good.
I think it's made a big difference in our operation.
And since I've only been on for a few months, I think what I've heard is historically, our accounts receivable are much lower than what they previously were.
Good.
That is true.
Yep.
Any other questions?
So is this the last increase that users can expect or is there an additional increase that they should anticipate in the future?
Well, I would assume that they should anticipate increases in the future for inflationary adjustments. I think we're trying to minimize that and look at this as maybe a bi-annual rate increase.
But as a result of the debt service, this is where that increase will max out, is that correct? There won't be any additional increases based on the, the debt that, that was incurred last year? This is sufficient to pay the debt service at this time and is anticipated to be sufficient in the future with inflationary adjustments?
So with inflation, the EDU rate should increase as a result of inflationary adjustments to the extent we need to do work to the collection system absent some other source of funding. I mean, our, our hope is to find other sources of funding outside of grants, but you know, that'll just depend what is determined at the time.
Yeah. I mean, I don't have to tell you all because you're users also, but this has been, you know, it's almost doubling up the bill for you, for people on the system. And, and it's, it's, it's been a hard hit and, you know, difficult for families and difficult for businesses, stifling the businesses. And you all know that personally. I'm not telling you anything you don't know. But I would be remiss as a supervisor for the district if I didn't point out in a very straightforward manner how difficult this has been.
I think we're all very aware of that. We're also aware of if we didn't have a functioning sewer system, there would not be any business.
That's correct. You're correct in that.
So I think we have to.
I know. And I mean, I, I wish in retrospect that we had waited, as I voiced before, until after the most recent election cycle. And there was an offer to help the county and I think this would have been a great, a much better fit that, for a million dollar request than, of a million dollars that will go into a courthouse project and, and would never be missed if, if.
I, I keep in close contact with Seehouse.
Yes.
And he's very much helpful. So I haven't given up. I'm just saying, right now, it's, it's harder to get money.
Well, it's unfortunate that, you know, it, things rolled out the way that they did. I know you all were at a tough spot, but at the end of the day, you all made your decision and this board made its decision.
The other thing just to remember is that all the contract prices go up and up and up, you know, the cost of all the whatever, concrete or.
Right. We've heard that about the courthouse as well. And I would just say that I, I don't find that to be a, an argument with much, with much merit, you know, based on that idea, you'd always be buying everything. And I don't, I don't find that to have a lot of merit. So I appreciate your, your point, but I, I don't think that that really holds water. So I thank you both.
One question I had, I think I have heard in the past where water gets into the system when it rains. And there's, I believe there was going to be some work done to test connections to see where leaks were happening. I think that probably got put on the back burner. Is that, I, I would think water does get into your system, that if you could stop it, that would help. What is the authority thinking on that?
Well, the, the tank we're putting in is much larger. It's 81,000 gallons.
Yeah.
As opposed to 30,000. So that should help a lot of the problem. But to try and pursue the collections, which we'd like to, is going to cost more money. So we've basically said, well, don't pull along and hope the new tank covers some of the problems. That's the best I can say at this moment.
Yeah. And, and I would just add that, you know, it is, work is done on this system and we notice issues. For example, there was water infiltration getting into the schoolhouse tanks that was discovered when the, the new main line was put in. And so that was sealed up to keep the water out. And I think the plan is, is we work on various accounts and see that we do what we can do. And as Sherry mentioned, the EQ tank is right at 80,000 gallons. The current one is 30,000. And so it gives us a little bit of room to take in that stormwater, which ideally, we wouldn't need to, but while the collection system is what it is, we have that capacity.
Thank you very much.
Great, thanks.
Thanks a lot.
All right. We have Mr. Nuzzbit with the VDOT quarterly update.
My leg's a little bit. Thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you for letting me be here today for my quarterly update. Gary, I sent you a copy of this, I don't know if you were able to get it out to the folks, but.
I posted it.
Okay. So I'll just, I'll just run through the, the bullet points here. The fall leaf season has passed and this year, it didn't seem like we had too many issues on route to 11, unless y'all were aware of any that, that didn't get to me. Seemed to be a little bit more manageable this year. And so we're, and we're now, we're preparing for winter weather activities and we had some, I think we had some, some weather this past weekend and we were supposed to have some more this, tomorrow morning. Our crews will be reporting tonight, getting ready and be prepared to, to handle the, the supposed to be a, there's a small amount of snow and perhaps some ice early in the morning. So we'll be ready for that. Our pavement projects were completed this year. We completed about 17 and a half miles of, lane miles of surface treatment this year. Next year, we have about 12 lane miles of surface treatment and a little, about 26 and a half lane miles of plant mix planned for 2026. We have begun construction on Horton Hollow Road. It's a rural rustic project in the six-year plan and we should be complete here very soon, in the next couple of weeks. And we'll let it sit over the winter time and then hard surface it next year. And then we're, we're, are, are ready to start Pullins Bluff Road next summer as well and to keep our program rolling along. The Sycamore Ridge Road Crossing at Pine River, unfortunately, earlier this year, we had that, that crossing wash out again. We did get the, the pipes reset and this, this time, we encased it in concrete and I don't, I don't want to be around if a storm comes and washes that out. I think it's, hopefully those, those pipes will be there. And we do have a little more asphalt work to do, but currently it's, it's open and passable. We have issued, we issued permits earlier this year to the Rappahannock County Sheriff's Office for photo enforcement, speed enforcement cameras in the school zones on 211. And I believe they've installed, I'm not sure if they've issued any summons yet, but they're there. I'll be, be aware. And also, the All Points Broadband project that's ongoing, to date, we have issued, I think, 18 permits. There are several that have been submitted that we are reviewing. And so far, I, I'm not aware of any issues. I know they, in some areas, they're running into some rock, like the surprise, surprise, but so far, I think they're, they seem to be moving along fairly well. If there's any issues, obviously, that come to y'all's attention, please let us know, but we'll try to keep, do what we can to keep that project moving. In the town of Sperryville, or Village of Sperryville, excuse me, we had a little issue there in, in, on Route 522 where a developer installed a block wall. I'm sure y'all have seen it. It does partially, it, uh, over, kind of comes over the right-of-way line. Not egregious, it's less than a foot, a few inches, but it is on public right-of-way and we're working with the property owner and the attorney general's office to resolve that issue. I can't say right now how that will be resolved, but I know the owner doesn't want to try to, doesn't want to move it, so we'll just have to work through, see what we can come up with. I'll keep y'all apprised of that. And we were, we've been reached out to by the Sperryville Alliance and they had a couple of locations where they had some concerns about pedestrian traffic, on one on Main Street and another on Water Street. I think we have a compromise on Main Street, but on Water Street, they have a crossing of their trail, Water Street, not too far from the bridge. And they wanted a crosswalk and some signing for that crossing, but their trail where it approaches or attaches to Water Street is, they have not submitted for an encouragement permit. So they were basically encroaching on our easement and so we've advised them, they need to pursue an encouragement permit if they're going to, if we're going to legitimize that crossing with any signs or markings. So we'll see how that goes. Anyway, that, those were most of the high points. If there are any questions, I'll be glad to, happy to answer them.
Thanks, Mark. Wrongway drivers, and we had talked at our public safety meeting sometime ago, that Colvin Road was, seemed to be a, a problem entry point, so we're near, closer to the Culpeper Line. And I, I thought that we had talked about you maybe installing a camera there just to see if we could get a handle on driver behavior and what's happening. And I was just curious if, if you have any update on that? Because I think we, obviously, we talked with you several times about this wrongway driver issue where, I think the next time we meet, we're going to have refreshed data. Hopefully, that'll show the enhanced signage on the, on the intersections along 211, the extent to which that signage has helped and I, I trust it has, it's hard to miss. Not to mention the additional signs on the 211 median, but Colvin Road still, I think, stands out and there have been recent incidents. I think Ms. Comer probably is more aware of those than I am, but there have been incidents very recently, again, where it seems something odd about the geometry of Colvin Road where it intersects 211 is still confusing people and we'd like to really get a handle on that if that in fact is a key entry point for these wrongway drivers, so.
Well, we did get the enhanced signing up there. And if, if you're going to have some updated information, when your upcoming.
I think so, yeah.
Public Safety Committee meetings would be.
Yeah, I think Lieutenant Jenkins, like, was going to pull some new data. So maybe we can, maybe Gary can coordinate with you and you or, or one of your colleagues could be at our next public safety meeting. Because we do continue to see, particularly on social media, people posting about these incidents. I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful that the trend is going in the right direction, but still happening, which is a problem.
Sure. Be happy to do that.
Yeah. And then on All Points Broadband, I wonder if you, I, you might have said it and I didn't catch it and I apologize if I didn't. Do you have a sense of total road miles for which VDOT has issued land use permits that are green lighted for construction?
I know typically, we limit our permits to two miles, so we've issued 18 permits. So that would be 36 miles.
Okay.
On the outside, but I think that would probably be pretty close.
Okay, and then.
I can get an exact number for you and send it to you.
And then we had heard in passing that, and maybe you can tell me if this is not correct, that you impose some limit on the number of crews that could be present in the county at any one time and that limit was 10 crews. Does that ring a bell? Does that?
I don't know if there's a number, if we.
We don't want limits on crews. We want as many here as possible, as soon as possible, so.
Yeah, I, I think, I, I don't know, I haven't heard any discussion internally that we've limited, that we have limited them to the number of crews.
Okay.
They've issued all the permits that, that were permissible, you know, usually when we review permits, some of them are good to go and we issue them, some of them need revisions, so. We've issued 18 permits and there's a handful that have been submitted that we haven't issued yet, but they're under review.
Okay. And then last question. Town of Washington somewhat haphazardly placed these 20 mile per hour speed limit signs, one of which they removed because it was mounted immediately underneath the stop sign at 622 and Main Street. I understand that certain of those 20 mile per hour speed limit signs were not properly placed within the town limits and I just wanted to know if you have any update on that and if you're getting cooperation from the town government in this regard?
I would say we are still working some, through that issue. I wouldn't say they haven't cooperated, but it's just been slow. I think there's, what they did was they basically replaced some 25 mile an hour signs.
Right.
Existing with 20 mile an hour signs and a couple of those were outside the town limits. And we've asked them to, to make those adjustments. We may end up doing it and they pay us to do it if they don't have the resources to do it.
Yeah.
I think that's kind of where we're looking at now.
Okay. And then the last thing, Town of Washington, I, I've talked to Mr. Curry, I would like, I've got a speed sign envy because certain of my colleagues were able to get solar speed signs in their districts and I don't have one. And, and I'd like one.
Okay.
And, and Mr. Curry always tells me, it's, you know, it's about VDOT and the land use permit and all that stuff. The one, the one I want is right out here by Baldwin's store. We've got one that our, our maintenance team has to replace a battery periodically and oftentimes, it takes a couple of days and it's not registering speeds. But whatever you can do to work with our county administrator to get, get whatever permits we need in place. And maybe it could be done in conjunction with moving the 20 mile per hour speed limit signs into the town so we can all go 25 and read 25 on the solar powered sign. It would be wonderful. I'm not asking for a lot. I just, I, it's a good place to have a sign coming past, coming past Baldwin's into the Town of Washington. I think the town would be grateful also that people could come in at 25 and then go down to 20 instead of coming at 45, which a lot of people currently do.
We'll be happy to work with Mr. Curry and try to make that happen.
Thanks.
And to sort of piggyback on that, these speed signs are a real hit with people in the county, for real. And being in Woodville, everybody's been asking me if we can get one southbound. So now Woodville has one coming northbound on 522 towards Sperryville, a flashing sign.
Right. Hey, I've seen it.
If we can get one coming the other way, where the other 35 mile an hour.
I wasn't privy to.
Alternatively, we could bypass Woodville. The cheaper option.
Yeah, I wasn't privy to some of the conversations Mr. Curry had with our traffic engineer. I think y'all looked at several sites and some of them were okay, some of them weren't.
Mr. Frumman agreed to the five that are in place and no others, and we'd be happy to open the dialogue. Okay, for others.
Yeah.
I mean, I live on 522 and this is anecdotal, obviously, but I do really think that they make a difference.
Me too.
And, I mean, I don't, I haven't done a date on it, but I, I do feel like if we can get one for the other way, that would be fantastic.
But I would get, get one.
He's in line. And I, he's already has one, for sure. I just had.
Y'all give Mr. Curry your R D and we'll work with that.
And as far as Chester Gap is concerned, I think we've talked about this before, but given that it's coming to winter and foggy and everything that happens up there that doesn't necessarily happen down here, I'm wondering if we can get reflectors on the, on both sides of Chester Gap Road. Sounds like they had them a while back, but when the road was paved or something, they weren't replaced. And I don't know how difficult that is, but I've heard stories of people on the hood telling the driver where they were in the middle of the road or not and.
So these are pavement.
So these are pavement reflectors or raised reflectors on posts?
Oh, no, on the pavement.
Okay.
So that you can clearly make sure you're not going off the road.
On Chester Gap Road itself?
Yes, sir. And thank you for getting that area paved for the school bus turnaround. Everybody was very happy about that.
You're welcome.
Well, if we're going to talk about what other supervisors have in their districts that we want in our districts, if we could have a heated camera up by the park for the mountain between LaRae and Sperryville, that would be really great. I, I hear really good things about that camera in Chester Gap. And many people travel or commute over that mountain, and it would be a huge benefit if we could have a camera installed at that location as well.
Now, there's a camera there at the, at the Skyline Drive.
At the entrance? Okay.
It just might ice up.
Is it heated, though?
I'll have to look into this further, or maybe you could let us know more. That would be great and much appreciated.
I will check, I know there's a, it's a different, we gotta buy a whole different kind of camera and have it installed. We've gone through that at Chester Gap, so we can put it on our list.
Well, sometimes you do have the resources, and it's just letting people know that the resources already exist.
Right.
So if that's the fact, then that's a wonderful thing. I think it will be interesting next year to see if the traffic issues on 211 were better because of the government shutdown, or they were just actually better as a result of something that we did. Because I, I have a feeling it may have been better as a result of the government shutdown, but.
Well, it was free this year.
Well, that's what I wonder, if people were just pulling in.
Because they didn't have to pay.
So there was not a backup.
Yeah, that's.
I have a feeling that, you know, that may have helped what would traditionally be a backup there at the entrance, so. But time will tell. And then I was wondering about the, the compromise on Main Street for Sperryville. What, what did you envision there?
Well, I believe we ended up internally agreeing to the pedestrian, watch for pedestrians signs on each end of Main Street.
Okay.
Instead of, you know, pedestrian crossing sign, but just watch for pedestrians. That kind of covers the whole.
Area, that sounds good. Thank you, Mark. Thanks for everything you've done. You've always been so responsive in my time on the board, and I've, I've learned a lot. There's certainly a lot of intricacies in working with VDOT, and I really appreciate how responsive you've been. And you've really made, for back to the very beginning when we worked on the bridge on Water Street, you really made a big difference in the lives of people in Sperryville, and I thank you for that.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. Happy holiday.
Thank you.
At this time, we're going to go into public comment, and depending on your timeline, you may want to just speak during public comment. Okay. Anyone wishing to speak, please be recognized, come up, and we'll do three minutes. And if you'll give us your name and your district, I'd appreciate it. Yes, ma'am?
Hello, I'm Victoria Fortuna, and I'm applying to be on the Library Board of Trustees for another term. We're in a critical period now where we're trying to figure out how we'll raise $3 million to stay where we are or entertain other offers. So I don't know if you have any questions for me about.
Fortunately, during public comment, it's one way, but I just wanted to make sure you were heard before, if you have to leave.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine, yeah, I don't, I don't have anything in particular to say. I just enjoy the work. I feel it's a, a great responsibility, but it's also very fulfilling for me to serve on the Library Board of Trustees, and I'm willing to continue in that respect, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
As our VDOT representative is leaving, I want to thank him for making sure that two trees that kept trying to fall down next to my property and onto the main road on Richmond Road were taken care of when I asked him, and, oh, sorry, Anita Ramos, Hampton District, like you all don't know. Real quick, first of all, the food pantry presentation was very good. But I really would like to think we all want to know a little bit more about the age ranges of the residents that don't have children, and to see what that age group is that is the most critical. And within that, if there's some way in the future through them or through our planning commission or through the board to do a study of what the needs are for rental housing in the county. This, this is the group that really needs it the most. And how much, not just their needs, but how much they can afford, and what kind of special housing needs they may have, one level, walkability type of things. So I hope that what they do can be expanded on in the future and help us have some more ideas about the housing needs of the county. Second of all, the, all the work that's been going on with the school about electrical, it seems to me that it would be a great time for their, the people involved in this to give a talk to the students. Perhaps some of them want to be electrical engineers someday, and they'll come back to, to Rappahannock County and help us all out. Quick things, otherwise, the courthouse. Let's get this over with and get it on the road because it's taking longer and longer for people to get the services that they need from the courthouse. And I've gone through this in Fairfax. I remember when two-year divorces took two years because a friend of mine went through that, and it takes a lot longer now there. I also have gone through settling an estate, and what took me a year's work took the court another almost four months to pass what I, I and a CPA and a lawyer had done. And it just sat for that long, and they told me it would take that long. And I'm recently been involved with a traffic situation back in July in Fairfax, and I'm not going to court about it till the 10th of December. And, and that's in a big place with lots of courtrooms and lots of judges, and it's taking that long. So the justice should be more swift, is what I'm thinking about. And I know it's not getting any swifter anywhere, and especially here. The 2026 legislative program, I found it fascinating reading. The section on environmental and water quality. Point number three about trying to have more water and know what you got in the first place. I'm really glad that we are pushing that. And the section on community and economic development. There's a section on affordable work and workforce housing. The word affordable needs to get expanded to the words affordable for low and moderate income because that's what our problem here is here, here in Rappahannock County. So I, a few comments and a few things to urge you about. And I'll be talking about our retiring board members later on this evening.
Thank you. Thanks, Mina.
Laura Grigsby, Hampton District, just two funny little things. The first one is we've had 18, because I've got them on my phone, REC outages in the same period of time that we were talking about, since last August. And I can think of two major storms during that time that would have facilitated those 18 outages, which caused our generator to go on. I would like someone to put a flashing sign in our UPS driver's truck that says, "You can't drive 35 miles safely on a gravel road that goes [mimicking engine sound]. That's it." So on a more serious note, I do have some trepidation about some of the upcoming potential subdivisions, planned community development and things that are going to tax are already, and I'm great and grateful that the debt service is being properly paid in the Sperryville septic tank systems. But I do have some concerns when I see housing projects that may take over the, in, happening in Sperryville, and that if it's not done very carefully, can burden a system that's already burdened to begin with. And that responsibility, at least in the other areas that I have lived in, has always fallen back on the developer, that they either have to pony up to fix what's there and to expand the system, or they have to do it on their own within their facility. So I do ask, along with everything else, that we don't get burdened with someone else's responsibility because this past year, when I had to have all four of the septic systems I'm responsible for, it cost me $450 just to have them pumped. Thank you.
Thank you.
Afternoon, it's Sheila Gressinger, Hampton District. First, I want to say thank you to Ms. Smith and Mr. Carney for your active and positive participation during your time on the board. I appreciate all the stuff you've done, and I just think it's, I'm sorry to see you go, but I, I thank you for your time on the board. Then I want to get into a quote, I'm going to paraphrase. Some, some people see things and say, "Why?" There are others that see things that others don't and say, "Why not?" And so what I'm using that is to illustrate an idea for the courthouse. We talk about how much it's going to cost, okay? My idea is with the visuals, I think all the renderings I've seen have shown a four-sided brick courthouse. My idea is that the courthouse needs to look impressive. And so I took a picture of a little church going into Flint Hill today. And it's very important to imagine, to, to use a visual. And so visualize the courthouse with an impressive entrance, all brick with the pillars like our courthouse that we have now. However, the rest of the building possibly might not need to be brick. You could have something like they show here on this little church. I think it used to be called like the water table. So what you could do is take the brick of the entrance, you're impressive, and then you could go around and do like a brick partial up to, up to a certain point. And then along with the extensive landscaping you could show, I think you would have a courthouse. Hopefully, I don't know much about brick, but I think it's sort of expensive. And then with the labor of putting it on, that might be a way to have a substantial reduction in the amount of how much the thing would cost, and it would benefit our county. So thank you. Bye.
Thanks, Sheila. Thank you.
Well, no surprise, I'm one trick pony, as you know. So this week, we're starting training for the free volunteer, I'm sorry, Anne Yeoman-Piedmont, I keep forgetting that. We're starting the volunteer training for the free tax filing, and we will be training all the way through the end of January. I'd like to point out a couple of things. One is we have some additional volunteers this year, and as in the past, they will be IRS certified and have a lot of additional training on top of that. But the reason I'm speaking here is that I'm hoping that the supervisors will help to ensure that their constituents know about this. We need to do, we will be doing much more outreach, starting in January, getting people into the system. But we're not, we have not in the first two years, even with our, actually quite a bit of success, we have not penetrated as much as we would like into the low and middle income families. And they're the ones who could most benefit from not paying several hundred dollars to have their return inaccurately sometimes, then paying someone to get their refund right on the spot and that sort of thing. And this year, because of all the financial stress and whatever, and I've talked to some of our nonprofit partners about this, I'm a little concerned that because people are so stressed out, that the minute they get their W2s or the minute they get any sort of their documentation for their income, then they go immediately to a page preparer, and they're going to lose some of the value of their refunds. So we will try to be a little bit of ahead of the game, but I would appreciate it if you would let your constituents or anybody listening, or let their friends and neighbors know that this will be coming, we'll be starting to file first week in February. We will submit the, we file same day, in most cases, unless somebody has a problem with their documents. And people will get their refunds within three weeks, which might seem like a long time for people that are feeling very financially stressed. But it's, it's kind of a cost trade-off. Do you want to pay 300, 400, $500 to someone to do your return versus waiting a couple of weeks to actually get it and get it done accurately? So that is, that is my main message. If you want to share it with your constituents, I'd really appreciate it.
What's the, what's the easiest way for someone to get in touch with you all?
RapTaxFree.org.
Okay.
And we'll be spreading this, we're actually updating the websites and that sort of thing. But we have an email, RapTaxFree.org. Or 540-227-4093, I think, is the number, but RapTaxFree.org.
Thank you.
Or people can call me directly, it's fine, too.
Thank you. All right, not seeing anyone else in the courtroom. We do have several people online. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment, please raise your Zoom hand to be recognized. All right, not seeing any hands raised, I will close public comment.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
We do have, the budget calendar is. It probably should be pulled off for discussion because there are two options.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to adopt the consent agenda without the agenda item for the budget calendar to pull back.
I'll say.
You have a motion and a second, any discussion?
If, if I could just add, I don't want to belabor a small point, but under item two, which is accounts payable, I'm just, maybe Mr. Curry or Ms. Don Hey, someone could just explain to me why there are three ACH payment subtotals shown under payroll? Like, what is, what is, why are those broken out? And what's the function of ACH payments in that context?
What I think is, in keeping with your general rules, that there's limited discussion, but do you want me to just pull that and talk about it? If you want to.
So let me amend my motion to pull the budget, calendar, agenda item, and the.
Item two.
Item two.
A B.
I'll say, I'll second.
Okay, you have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, okay. Take them in order, accounts payable.
Right, so there are just a few payments that are extremely time sensitive and have extreme consequences if checks don't make it where they're supposed to go, when they're supposed to go. And we pay those by ACH. We did have a scenario several years ago where we were paying Anthem by check, and it had to be, depending on the day, the month, the meeting was, and then we're scrambling around to get a check cut. And so really, it's a convenience of avoiding consequences.
And what is, what is the term VOYA?
That is the new state provider for the defined contribution portion of VRS. So it's the 457 kind of portion. It's not a self-directed, but it's the hybrid employees.
And I guess, being new, that's why it jumped out at me as.
Yeah, it would have been called Mission Square before.
Okay. And, but then I also see a VRS payment, which is substantially more in value.
Right, and that's just a percentage of salaries.
Okay. All right, I, I'll put forward a motion that we adopt accounts payable, having had those questions answered.
A second?
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, all right. Moving into budget development calendar.
The budget calendar was prepared as, consistent with the past years, with one exception. The budget calendar was prepared as, consistent with the past years, with one exception, and that was the addition of a second meeting with the school board. Bonnie shared this with all board members and board members-elect. And there was one conflict with Mr. Settle reported in April 20, which is why draft two came up. So if board members and others are amenable to draft two, then you could adopt it, and we could charge forward, and the public will know what these dates are. If you're not quite sure, then I suppose you could put it off, but we don't want to wait too long because we want to provide some, we want folks to know what's coming, and we want to make sure we're on the same page with the school board. The school board has already adopted their schedule as reflected on this.
Draft two is fine with me. Does anybody?
It's fine. I moved to adopt it.
One second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Moving into the addendum, appointment to the Library Board of Trustees. Heard from Victoria, but if anybody has any questions, you are still here, so that's good.
I did just have a question, since you brought it up. I had noticed that staff was taking meetings with you to discuss leasing. Are you back to that option then, and not thinking about building, improving the building on site?
There have been some informal discussions with Rush River, too. Nothing, nothing, nothing written down or nothing, no formal terms, and nothing approved by the Library Board of Trustees as yet. But the various editorials in the paper have opened the discussion again because it's a different, a different time, a different scenario. And so we certainly are open to hearing what they might offer us, so.
Well, I mean, I know you've heard this from me before. It's not going to be headline news. I hope you all stay where you are and modestly improve the building within your means. I think, you know, you have about 50 visitors a day, which is commendable in a locality this size. But I've always thought it was overly ambitious to grow as you had proposed previously. And I think frankly, most people in the county feel the same way. They hear about a new library, a new courthouse, and growing demands of the schools, and fire and rescue, and they feel overwhelmed. And a lot of people say, "I don't, I don't really use the library. I don't know why I would pay more taxes for the library system." And if people don't live central to the location of the library, then maybe they don't frequent it. But everybody pays. So that's my two cents. It's my last meeting, so I just had to mention it, since you had brought it up and I had seen it in the staff notes. I hope you'll take it into consideration and maybe have outreach in places that you wouldn't ordinarily consider to listen to the opinions of local people.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I was just curious if we've had any applicants. I've noticed that Ms. Hume, who's a constituent of mine, who's served for a long time, is not seeking reappointment. Have we received any applications? And what do we need to do?
No, it has been advertised, and the intent is advertise it during the month of December, and then you can...
She has not decided to ask for reappointment, but she's certainly able to if she wishes to. It was my understanding that she wants to step down because when she was renewed, I guess that was about a year ago, it was for a very short term. So...
And now you are fully staggered, which is great.
Yeah, that was a function of staggering, staggering of terms. Okay.
I don't want to make the motion because you don't live in Piedmont District, but I'm glad you're willing to continue to serve and I hope you do get reappointed.
Thank you.
Well, I'd like to thank you, Ms. Fortuna, for all your work on the Library Board. As somebody who uses the library very often with my three children, it is a central part of our life. My kids use it constantly, and it has been a huge benefit to them and then to us. So thank you.
We had, I don't, I can't do the math in my head, but we did have almost 15,000 visits last year. And we did have more than 31,000 items, either hard materials like books and videos, as well as electronic materials taken out by the members of our public. We had about 120 programs, which is quite substantial. I mean, Amanda's done an incredible job. And, you know, I think when I first started on the board, we, maybe we had, you know, one program a month. But now we have quite a few depending on the month. And we have more outreach, and we have the possibility of doing more for the community.
Well, my kids definitely make use primarily of the books. And I'm always just shocked at how amazing a job you guys do with keeping up on the inventory with what the kids want. And my kids and their friends, like, it's like a constant thing. So it's been hugely valuable to us.
Good. Well, I'm glad, I'm glad they're enjoying it.
And I know that other, I know that other counties have libraries that are going through similar challenges and different challenges. And so I'm just very grateful that we have the library that we do. And I support it hugely. And so I'm going to move to appoint Victoria Fortuna to the Library Board of Trustees for a four-year term ending December 31st, 2029, and waive all informalities, informalities with that point of process.
We're going to waive something.
I'll second that.
We're waiving it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Did all of your staff get their vacations in this year? We want to make sure everyone is hand-rested and ready.
I know, yeah.
Thanks for, thanks for stopping.
Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Just one second.
Yeah.
Yep.
And you need to be out of here by 3:40. It's 3:37.
I was trying to get chatting.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Victoria.
Hi, you're welcome. My pleasure.
And you're already advertising, so you don't need anything further on that.
This is one that is automatically advertised unless the board is not interested in doing that.
All right. Moving into old business, regional fiber home broadband project discussion. Van, it seems to be happening in your neck of the woods.
Sure does.
You seen anything?
I have not seen anything recently. I have heard from people on the ground, though, that they are witnessing crews moving and hollering at each other, literally. Good and bad, I guess, I'm, no, but not, people are on the ground working. So that's good. I'm sort of waiting, though, to kind of see what the, what the tip of the spear on the communication is, you know? That's what I want to know because people are here, people are asking me, and, you know, I think we talked about this last time, but they seem to have new leadership there, which is a good thing. And, you know, VDOT, they're working well with VDOT, which is good. This BEAD project is interesting, that the funding came through. I just, I just think it's confusing for people, and I get it because it's a project, and it's confusing because it's a project. But the point is, is that now that this BEAD is going to be through the ISP, correct?
Yeah.
So that's going to be like a whole separate process that people are just going to have to kind of tackle on their own.
I'm sure...
And my, my hope is that APB is not people tackling it on their own.
My understanding is that the ISP is wanting to be seamless to the end user, regardless of where the money comes from. There is a, an update scheduled for this month for the whole region. So we'll get some more information on that, and hopefully some information on that communication piece and the 90 days and all of that.
I think, I mean, you know, I rushed down there as soon as the blade hit the ground on Castleton View. And I think that what would be really helpful, I mean, I know, I know Mr. Curry forwarded to us these regional commission reports, which, no offense to you at all, but I don't find them particularly useful because we now have 12 months until the end of 2026. We need crisp communication from All Points Broadband on what road they're working on, how many miles are completed, who's being hooked up, when they're going to be hooked up. Because right now, it's, I think there is a real potential for complacency now that they're digging. And I think this time now, more than ever, we need to have regular operational updates that are crisp and tied to road miles, and that are tied to subscribers, and that are tied to plans for mobilization of additional crews so that we can hold, we on this board can hold All Points accountable on what now is a very compressed timeframe of 12 months. We can't afford to let a month go by where we're going, "Oh, yeah, I heard they're on Castleton Ford," or "They're on Castleton View," and there's one cabinet installed. That, to me, is, is way too loose. I think we got to nail them down with specificity. So what I would ask is, Madam Chair, you, or the County Minister, Mr. Curry, or someone under your direction, to make it clear to All Points Broadband, Tom Innes in particular, that we need, at a minimum, we need an update once a week, what's been done, what's going to be done, where crews are going to be, so that we can communicate with our constituents and tell them what they can expect in terms of timing of being hooked up. Yeah, this can't be loosey-goosey for the next 12 months with some vague hope that it's going to get done. We need, we need to hold them, hold their feet to the fire and make sure that the promised miles are going to be installed on time. And even that point, at first, we were at 180 miles. And then I talked to Mr. Innes some weeks ago, and he was telling me it was like 120 miles of middle-mile fiber. And that's not an insignificant discrepancy. That's, that's a 33% reduction in the miles that they were committed to building under the first phase of the program. So I really think we need crisp, clear communication to us from the Internet service provider so that we can convey to our, the people we represent, what they can expect and when they can expect it.
What I would, along that line, what I really want is a communication plan. Like, when you're ready to hook this to people up, because they're not ready yet, but when you're ready, what are you going to do? How are you, just give us a slide deck, something that says, "We're going to do this, 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 and this."
Yeah.
That's what I want to know. Because I get, like, they're still working with VDOT, they're still working through stuff. They don't know exactly when they're going to start plugging people in. I just want to know, when you start the first person, how is it going, how the domino is going to fall after that? And what's your, what's your communication plan? It could even be with their communications director. Like, that's more important to me, to make sure that nobody misses that discounted $99 price, which is cool.
Yep.
Like, people need to be able to take advantage of that.
Absolutely. And they had told us in the past that 90 days out, people would start receiving documentation, door hangers, all that good stuff to let them know it was coming.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure when the 90 days are out, that when we count to day zero, the hookup has occurred. Because I've heard some feedback from other counties where it was 90 days out, and it was way past that when the hookup actually occurred. So setting clear expectations, I think, are very important.
I also think that if we don't have a communications plan from them, we don't know how to track their progress. We don't know what they're missing, and we don't know what they're doing. So if they're like, "Yeah, we're just going to do all the things. We're going to do door hangers, we're going to do emails, we're going to do postcards," if we don't actually have that plan in front of us, it's harder for us to track it. I think. I mean, I really think that they should give us that. I think we should have a legitimate communication plan that says we will do these things.
Yeah, and we need a map. They need to give us a map and say, "Here's where our crews are this week, here's where they'll be next week, here's how many miles we're averaging under the current weather conditions." Because otherwise, we're shooting in the dark, and we're just hoping that they're going to get it done. So, yeah, crispness and clear communication. And I think that's, that's burden on them, not on county staff. That's, and I know Mr. Curry has talked with Mr. Innes about getting the macro plan for the county, so we have some sense of where they're headed. And I don't know if we've received that. I want them to keep digging. I want them to keep going. Just want to know where they're going and who's getting hooked up. And to Van's point, how they're going to, how they're going to do that and execute it. It's, it's time.
It's not an unreasonable ask. So, I mean, do we need to do anything other than, say, simply someone contact APB?
I've already asked for these things, so, I mean, if you want to make an action of the board, then that may increase. I do receive a report every day of the crews in the county and where they're working. There are five today. But it's disconnected from any sort of plan or bigger picture.
I was going to suggest that in January, it'll be a year since the broadband committee has met. And with seating two new supervisors, perhaps it would make sense to have All Points come in person and negotiate these requests with them.
Yeah, good idea, Christine.
I had spoken with Mr. Curry to get the new CEO and Tom here in January. And I don't know where we stand on that.
Okay. Good idea.
I did want to say, I heard from a constituent down on Slate Mills Road regarding concerns of some of their assets, All Points Broadband's assets down there. And it does seem like they're amenable to working with folks. So that's, that's good news, and hopefully will bear fruit.
Yeah, how did that, it worked out? It's working?
Seems like it will. I mean, maybe you could...
Did you hear any more from this constituent?
I was going to say, maybe you could follow up, Mr. Curry, and confirm since you're back. And presumably, everyone takes a pause around Thanksgiving and, and just maybe just follow up on that. I think that it will all work out. Sounds like it will work out.
All right. Thank you. Moving into the courthouse project, continued discussion. Have you heard anything from Duave?
As a matter of fact, about five minutes ago, I received the scope and fee, I received last Friday a draft of the scope and fee proposal to look at another concept along the lines that the board discussed at your last meeting, which was basically to have one floor above ground from Gay Street and then a full walkout basement, if you will, and invert the layout where the courthouse, courtrooms are below the clerks as opposed to the other way around. And so I just got a draft Friday and told them that it was generally okay. They had to double-check a few things, and now I've got the non-draft version. It is within the spending authority that the board set, and they, it says eight weeks with report out in the middle. So I'll get that signed up, and then get back to the office.
Thank you.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, moving into new business, the rapid and rapid legislative program.
What's the background here? This is Regional Commission, right?
Yep. And they do look at what VACO has put together and then present to the Regional Commission, asking for any changes or edits that the counties have requested. So basically, we need to make sure we're in agreement with what's there. And if there are any changes, I saw a typo that I pointed out to Patrick yesterday. If there are any meeting changes, take those forward.
I stumbled through the language on data centers, and I, I wondered if the wording could be better on the second paragraph of the data center language. "While data centers provide positive economic impacts, the massive and rapidly growing electricity demand are, should be demands, demands are, or demand is, making it difficult for the state's energy infrastructure to meet." That, that sentence is incredibly clunky and doesn't have... That, that par- that sentence is incredibly clunky and doesn't have subject verb agreement and this to me is probably one of the most important things to talk about.
Yep.
Um, so I, I think that that needs, I mean, I read it like five times and I, I still think it's probably not exactly right.
Uh, it's, uh, oh, oh, this came together late this year because of the procurement process to select the legislative support company, which stayed with Eldon although there was an RFP and there was a process. Uh, so it is a little behind and that's probably one reason why it hasn't seen as many eyes at this point.
Seems like a lot of words to convey certain thoughts. I was, I was like, there's gotta be an easier way to say some of these things in a, in a way that I didn't remember in years previous.
And I haven't compared, if this is VACO wording, I haven't compared it to see if it is or not.
There are two main positions here that, um, are, I think, important to the county outside of data centers, which are important, not for the data center, for the elec- electricity. Uh, that is the school funding, uh, which is included as a priority, particularly the economies of scale, which VACO picked up and, uh, which COSARS and various other VASs and acronyms that I don't really know what they mean, uh, that Dr. Grimsley is involved with, they're pushing and we're hopeful that we'll gain some traction because it has very real benefits for Rappahannock County. Uh, that and then, uh, follow up to the subdivision ordinance designated agent stuff, that is identified in here as well. Um, and my caution there is that any change to increase that population threshold should be paired with extended review time cycles. So that if you are going to have a public body hold that role, there's enough time to do that because along with the SB 974, there was the House Bill 2660 or something like that, that shortened the time frames, which make it, will make it very difficult for a public body to fill that role. So you don't want to catch the bumper and then not be able to succeed. And so that has been, um, that information has been provided to Patrick.
Do we, do we need to endorse this today? Is that what we're looking for?
Last year, the board chose not to endorse the regional plan. Um, the board can, uh, or you can pull from this and, and just use this as information as you speak to Senator Reeves and Delegate Weberd. Um, I don't think there's anything in this plan that is counter to Rappahannock's kind of sensibilities. Um, I don't know that you want to endorse the exact wording, but maybe in, in general.
Yep. I do believe, um, and I've had some citizens recommend, that if we have issues like the subdivision, um, that we all feel strongly about, it goes much further enrichment if we're not just Rappahannock County saying it. So endorsing the regional, um, as long as we agree with what's in it, I think gives us more strength, in my opinion, than just Rappahannock County sending an individual note. Um, I did, um, Senator Reeves', um, administrator contacted me and asked to have within a 24-hour period of time, um, a note as to what the subdivision ordinance would, um, would, what kind of heartache was happening with Rappahannock and based on our discussion last month, um, and with Gary's help, I just sent him a note that basically said, we want the number, population increased and we want the timeline increased as well. Um, and I know Madison has talked to Senator Reeves' office, um, I think Falls Church has a problem with it as well. So anything we can do with others, I think, gives us more strength as a small rural county.
Yeah, point taken, Ms. Smith, about the data center thing. I mean, I think it's just the elephant in the room. I, I just, I can't believe anybody, I mean, I just, it doesn't make any sense to me. Nobody has a plan. Our ratepayers are gonna be paying for other people making money in Loudon and wherever everybody's gonna build a data center and our ratepayers are gonna pay. Now, this language does basically locate control with the locality, which is good. But, I mean, I think it is, this is, this is a big deal and I just don't, I don't, there is no plan, there's just a big ask and market forces will do what they do. So I do think getting that language right, I, I, I agree, I think, in the entire document, that is, I mean, right, I mean, are you guys feeling the same way here? I mean, there is a big, big issue in front of us, our CFO just told us.
Yep.
The power demand that's being asked of the region is crazy and there's no plan to provide it. So, I mean, it's happening, I mean, you can go, PDC has provided a great working document where you can see all the ones that have, data centers that have already been, uh, approved and ones that are in the pipeline and it's, 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 it's wild.
It's crazy.
Yeah. So I mean, this language does get there, but I don't know, it just, it concerns me for the ratepayer because.
That last sentence, basically, was the only thing that's covering the, you know, the high-energy electrical service users are responsible for covering costs associated with their facilities. I believe Governor-elect Spamber actually brought that up as well, that she believes they should be paying for the costs, not the citizens in the neighborhood.
Right. Um, so I don't know.
Well.
Anyway, thanks for bringing, bringing, bringing it up, Ms. Smith, about the, I'm not sure how, how much effect it has, but I just, it does.
What is, I mean, what is, what advantage is there, uh, not put it forward in endorsement?
I mean, we didn't endorse it last year and I don't know of anything that was.
Okay.
Well, I think some of the things, um, that the document talks about, like affordable housing and transportation plans, I think sometimes as a small county, we don't want to be married to large ideas that we don't have intentions to finance.
Right.
Um, but in light of the concerns about zoning, data centers, um, the J-LAR, making sure we get equitable funding for our schools, um, I think this, this is a year that we should consider endorsing it.
Good.
If they fix that sentence.
Of all the counties, of, of the counties in our region, uh, not all of them are really interested in the economies of scale because they have population, school populations greater than 2000, so they're going out to support.
Exactly.
You, us, uh, and so there is some reciprocal support that is appropriate.
Um, I'll move that, endorse the, the Rappahannock Rapidan legislative plan agenda.
One second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? We will make the recommendation on the.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And ultimately, this will be vetted by the regional commission, so they'll have that.
I'm sure they'll get it sharpened up.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. One thing also on this, I think because of the concern of how did we miss the subdivision, um, bill last year, that it would be good for this board to work up a hot list for Eldon that is important imperative to Rappahannock County, um, just so that when Eldon's walking in the room and thinking about who he is covering, he can immediately say these are their top five or, um, whatever number we come up with, so that, um, he's on alert, basically.
It is hard to know what you don't know and I, as bills are dropping, I, I typically go in and search for code sections, so 15.2 asterix, 15.2 dash 22 asterix, 23 asterix, 22 and 23 are the land zoning subdivision, and just to see, or 2.2, uh, and 34, so full year. Otherwise, it's impossible. There's just, you know, 2, 2,500 bills, I mean, it's just impossible to know what's going on. So we do our best to try to figure it out. They, as they come up to other people's attention, whether it's the regional commission, Eldon, VACO, the school organizations, then they start floating around and you get, you know, traction online through the various newsletters and whatnot, but a lot of things, you just, you gotta go do the hard mining work to try to find things that are important. And then, a lot of them just don't stand a chance, because you don't, only want to put so much effort, so I try to put together a listing of bills that are, are likely important to the board, um, and then keep track over time. But that particular bill, SB 974, it raced through.
Yeah.
From introduction to done was less than 30 days.
And I did attend the, um, Rappahannock League of Environmental Protection annual event and this is, the subdivision was high on their list of trying to make sure it, um, the changes occur to it. All right, um, moving into information reports and correspondence, we've got board committee reports, um, I don't know who has met. Let's start with recreational.
Yeah, and coincidentally, um, at our last meeting at this, uh, this December, so November, at November's meeting, um, you might recall, I had just received the park, had just received news of, um, you know, some good grant money, so that would have been my headline, um, today, because that's what we talked about at that meeting. Um, in addition to the grant money that has, you know, the grant that they are, um, gonna use for, hoping to get, um, and use for the, the playground and the basketball courts and tennis and pickleball, all of that good stuff, they are, believe it or not, they were starting to work on firestacks, so, um, it is, um, be looking, be looking for information about that, that will, April will be here before you know it. So that's, that's really it.
And that grant's very exciting.
Yeah, they, and it is much bigger than they originally anticipated, so fingers crossed that all of that works out and they get that large pot of money.
Public safety, when are we meeting again?
Uh, we need to meet, you need to meet, we need to meet, I'm part of that. Um, so really should meet in December.
I thought that was fairly typical.
Um, when was our last meeting?
It was about three months ago.
Okay.
All right, so we'll look for a.
Pick a date.
Look for a date. Uh, planning commission?
Well, we met and recommended approval of transient lodging language, which will be coming to you in January. Um, there was a concern raised toward the end of that discussion regarding, um, trailer campgrounds and, um, I'm happy to cover that or talk to you about that, or camper-type campgrounds as opposed to tank campgrounds. Um, we did table the electrical substation language, um, discussion because some, uh, revised language was recommended shortly before the meeting and people didn't feel like they had enough time to review it, um, including members of the public. And, um, we recommended approval of, um, the division, um, in the commercial general overly district, Level 211.
Ms. Parmally has reached out to staff and we scheduled a meeting, I don't recall when it is, but.
That sounds good. It sounded like it was, it was worth it to hunt for a little while, work through those details.
Thank you. Fire lobby board?
We did not meet.
Okay. All right, going into reports.
I'd be, I'd, it looks like, um, there, something is moving on Harmony Manor on the lawsuit.
If we're there.
Yeah, can we go through the treasurer's reports first?
Sure.
Um, thank you.
Sorry.
That's okay, we'll get there.
We will see.
Uh, cash flow graph and food and lodging and sales tax.
Cash flows flat.
Which is expected pretty much at this time.
But, um, less than, you know, the last couple of years, so you are spending money and revenue's a little delayed. Let's see, where you're just a little low. So we'll, once we get up to the end of December, we'll have a better idea where you fit in relative to other years.
Okay. Sales tax.
Uh, sales tax has come in relatively strong, I mean, it's not way over, but it's meeting budget.
So this is current reporting and so it's for the month previous for sales tax, so two months.
Two months, expenditures two months prior.
So it'll be interesting to see how, how collections go when we review them in January because it will be, um, government shutdown related for this period.
Yep.
And meals and lodging will be the same way. And I, I kind of think maybe the shutdown and people, you know, taking advantage of the open park, that maybe things will be robust, but it will be interesting to see come January.
I agree.
You can say that oftentimes, December is one of your high months because there's October expenditures, which is leave.
Yep.
And then February is a high month because it's tracking December, which is holiday spending.
Meals and lodging, please.
I'm not sure where we are on the, oh, there you go.
Yep.
Yep, pretty level.
Yeah. So again, the, the next couple, or the next reporting should show what the, um, shutdown did.
Yeah, but it's quarterly, so we'll get, we'll see that for a little while.
Yep. All right, any other reports you guys want to look at? All right, um, legal matters. Mr. Whitson.
Yeah, I was just, for a long time, this Harmony Manor, uh, Country Inn, BNB thing has been on the back burner, but I saw this note here that somebody's gotten excited about it and it's come back to life, so I just wonder if, what you can tell us or about where this stands or what's happening.
Yeah, what is the complaint?
This was.
Well, they're appealing or.
This is appealing the special exception decision to deny the, the Country Inn. But they, they sat on the sideline for a long time. We got an interesting email from our attorney that, uh, from Hendrickson's attorney that said something like, well, we tried to work it out, but we didn't get anywhere, so, uh, we're gonna move forward to this and we'd like dates from you for December. And then the next thing she knew, they had a date on the calendar in November, uh, which which just came and went.
Well, what do they, what is, what are they appealing? What are they saying?
Your special exception.
I know, but, I know, but what are they, what are their, what are their grounds for how they messed up?
I don't remember. Well, it's arbitrary. It's been a while since the super file. And like I said, it, it all of a sudden just exploded.
Was it just an arbitrary and capricious argument or was it?
I don't, I just, I don't remember the details of what they alleged you all did wrong.
Right.
I think it does come down to a caps kind of situation, again. Uh, and then there's, there is a, uh, there's a dispositive pleading, it'll be already January 16th, I understand. It's a, um, it's a demur saying, you know, they haven't stated the cause of action.
Right.
Uh, and then I suppose if, if we don't win that, they'll dissent for the trial, but we won't know that until January 16th.
If you remember, this particular special exception, there was, uh, really, uh, your decision focused in on transportation.
Correct.
The private road, the intersection with 211, the entrance, um, it seems like an incredibly high bar for anybody.
The record in our favor is the plea.
So if I, if I recall, the planning commission denied it.
Recommended, sorry.
Yeah. Right?
We recommended denial, it's all coming back to me now. I thought we, I thought it was relatively, pretty exhaustive, our review of it.
Yeah.
And, um, and we even had people from the co-op come out and, and, and make statements at the.
Yeah, they're not.
Planning commission level that were, that were super helpful.
Yeah.
So, um, and enlightening, and set the record straight, so, um, I, I'm, I'm curious and, and confident that the county will prevail.
I'd heard that maybe the owners were looking to sell and maybe that's what they were thinking, were trying to work it out but didn't, didn't get there? I don't know, can only guess.
All right, seems like that's a, a good business. I would, I would hope maybe people would just concentrate on fostering the business that they are able to conduct, but.
Any other, other reports you all would like to highlight at the moment?
Did I answer any questions?
$3 million of building, right? That's always good.
Just, um, this is, forgive me if it sounds like this is a make-work proposal, but I was thinking the other day, when we get in, when we get into this stage of a meeting and we have these disparate reports, which all on a standalone basis are excellent and provide a lot of information.
which all on a standalone basis are excellent, provide a lot of information. I'd like to, going forward with two new board members, uh, I just wonder if we could, if there, without too much additional staff time, if we could have, uh, a report dashboard that just basically hits the highlights in one place that citizens can see our cash posi, for example, our cash position, any, any very active legal matters, um, year-to-year comparison of building permits, just, you know, like a one pager that puts, puts all the key information out and, and maybe functionally it would save time. I, um, I don't want to reinvent the wheel. I don't want to create more work. But, um, sometimes I think we get to this point in a meeting where we're fatigued and it's like, it's, it's, I think we all are fully engaged with the materials. It's, I think, more about providing a service to the public that is something to think about, just an idea.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. So you're looking for something more for the public that's a.
Just, yeah, just like, just a dashboard, uh, glimpse on key financial indicators. Um, we always look at our cash position. We always look at sales tax revenue. We always look at meals and lodging tax revenue, tax collections, but just maybe hitting, hitting the same highlights every month um, with a year, year-to-year comparison and kind of a clean format. Cause I think sometimes it's easy to get lost in the detail. Um, and maybe that will spur better questions from our board and from the public also. Just an idea. But if it turns into a giant burden on staff, I don't want to be, I don't want to be the endorser of, uh, of more work for.
We would certainly, it sounds like you want a report of the reports and that's definitely more work.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, I think.
But if that's what the board wants, that's what you get.
It might be a job for AI.
Yeah.
Could be.
As long as there's a disclaimer.
Yes.
I heard RAPCE is doing a, a class on AI.
Good point.
Yeah, and I could, uh, in, in my spare time over the holidays, I'll see if I can just map out what I have in mind. More, I started drafting something here, but, um, yeah, I'm not, it really, it's, it's about communication. It's about, uh, clean communication. And I think sometimes you look at all the reports that are made available to us and there's a lot to dig through quickly.
It would be really interesting to see, and I don't know, Mr. Curry, if you've done this, if you've gone back and looked. Like, so for instance, in 2024, we had thirty-five new homes built. In 2025, we've had thirty-eight. It would be, now that's all new revenue, right? We're talking about, and look at the cost of these houses. So that's all that's coming into the pipeline. But it would be really interesting to see over the past, you know, decade, what the trend is on building houses.
That's in the comp plan. So we have that table.
Yeah.
We could, we could add that as a running.
How long has, how is dated? Couple decades or one day?
I, I couldn't answer that right now.
That's kind of interesting.
It is interesting. I always look at the houses.
I mean, it is the number one source of our revenue, right? So, and when people are, and it's not raw laying. So when you're putting these houses on it that are, you know, almost a million dollars per house, well, it's not for this one. It's like seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars per house. That's significant.
Yep.
Yeah, and the, uh, the permit fee can be all sorts of things, just commercial and all kinds of.
Right, 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 yeah.
All right, uh, on to matters presented by the board.
Um, yeah, so I attended the Virginia Career Works CLEO, uh, retreat, uh, middle of November, I guess. I can't remember now exactly when. Um, but, and I don't, you know, I'm on the CLEO board and I don't often get to, they only meet, uh, every three months, uh, but I do attend the Business District Nine meetings monthly. So it is, it's very interesting. And I know that typically these, um, these districts, actually, we all, I think, uh, alluded to this fact, um, when the Go Virginia folks came and spoke to us last month. Lots of these districts, um, very Charlottesville, Albemarle focused. Or every now and then I know, and, uh, tourism were, were tossed in the Northern Virginia, uh, group. So, um, point being, sometimes it doesn't, you know, what these groups are doing don't, it doesn't always, uh, translate to, it doesn't always fit for Rappahannock. Um, with that though, I will say, um, Sarah Morton, who is the director of Virginia Career Works is, um, phenomenal. She is a mover and a shaker. And, um, she and her team are very active in our, with our high schools. So, uh, you know, I want to make sure that my colleagues here are aware of that. But also, um, it did not go unnoticed by me while I was at this retreat. I was the only person from, who could speak about Rappahannock or Faukeer County. It's like the only person. There are close to thirty people in the room and, um, I would love, love, love to get a business, a Rappahannock County business represented, um, on this board. I've reached out to a couple of people, but, um, I just share that with, if any of you know someone who has all this, this spare time to meet, um, they meet quarterly. This group only meets quarterly. And I just think we have, uh, to maintain our relevance in groups like that, we need to be there. And, um, we have good things to share and I think unique things to share. So if, um, if someone comes, crosses your mind, who would be a good fit, and preferably an employer, um, who could talk about workforce needs and whatnot. Um, but yeah, that's it. There, like I said, Sarah Morton is, she's very strategic. So I think we should leverage her strengths in leading that group by participating actively in that group.
All right, thank you. Ms. Smith?
Uh, I had the very interesting experience of being called for jury duty this past month. I saw Van there. I saw Art there. I was lucky number juror, lucky number thirteen.
It's a pretty small pool.
Hey, it was an elite pool of jurors, let me tell you. And, um, you know, I just, it caused me to reflect on, um, the value of talking to people that maybe you wouldn't normally talk to every day. Because, um, I, if I'm sitting with a group of eighteen people and I can't use my cellphone, I'm gonna talk to people. And, um, it was a really interesting opportunity to engage, um, a cross-section of people about the courthouse project. And, um, just to, to hear some questions and, and perspective on it. And, and my takeaway on it is that most people say, hey, we're Rappahannock County. We have modest courthouse and that's okay because we're a rural county and we only have so much money. And so don't ever be afraid to say that or ashamed to say that because it's true. And then the other thing I would say, um, I learned in my, in my day as a prospective juror, um, is how much people love these historic buildings. And please, 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 don't forget the important work of restoring and repairing these buildings for years to come, which I, I fear often is set aside, um, in the, in the discussion of a modern courthouse building. Um, because I have, a lot of people are old fashioned and think you should take care of what you have. And I'm, I'm one of those people and it was nice to hear that. So it was a really valuable lesson and I learned a lot. And, um, just another reinforcement of, of the, of the importance of maybe talking to people that you wouldn't normally talk to every day. So, um, thanks for listening. And thank you for your, um, uh, kindness and good humor. And, um, I hope at the end of the day, even though we haven't always agreed on things, I think it's a great tradition, Rappahannock County, to be able to disagree agreeably. And that even in the heat of, um, a moment, maybe we were very, are very, um, set in our argument or, um, overly expressive in the way we said something. But at the end of the day, I, I felt with all the boards that I sat with, you come back on the field and you're ready to play when that, when that play is over. And, uh, to work to the betterment of the county. And so I thank you very much, um, for your work as my colleagues and, um, for our work as a board over the last few years, some of you for, for longer than others. But, um, I very much appreciate your good, your good company as we go down this road together. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Whitson?
Sure, um, uh, two, two broad topics. First for county staff. Um, I do want to commend county staff for the, uh, the work in the wake of the, um, the state mandated subdivision, um, constraint on local authority, uh, the work to, I think in response to our very concerned citizens about notification of subdivision applications. I think it, it was very sensible, the plan that came out of that. And, um, I appreciate, I appreciate, um, that staff and our board, um, implemented that, that notice policy on the subdivision applications. Um, looking ahead, I, I don't want to now, um, walk entirely away from, uh, the subdivision ordinance and any, any threads that come out of the subdivision ordinance that might go into our broader zoning ordinance or county ordinances in general. And I think to that end with, with our board's consensus, I, I frankly would like to not, um, walk away from the question, our subdivision ordinance and various elements, including bonding requirements, et cetera. And instead ask county staff to at least, um, make sure that our subdivision ordinance and then related provisions in other parts of our county ordinance are buttoned up and squared away to the extent possible because obviously this, this, um, the state mandate caught everyone off guard. And I think we've, we, we've done what we could so far, but I think it's a good opportunity for us to, to stay engaged with, with the subdivision ordinance in particular. And so, um, with consensus from the board, I would, uh, without being one person of direct staff, I think it is important that on an ongoing basis, we hear from Mr. Goff and Mr. Curry, other areas of our sub, areas of our subdivision ordinance that perhaps need updating, correction, refinement, um, more specific, et cetera. I don't know if that's.
Yeah, I think, uh, there was some, I think, call from the public, from, I think, the planning commission, maybe from the board, as the board was looking at the state mandated changes to do more and tweak more. And it was my recommendation at that time, let's keep it separate just so.
Yeah.
We all know. Uh, but I do, I think that staff agrees that we should, all of our county ordinances and code of ordinance, we should be reviewing them all. And, uh, this is an important one for this community, obviously.
Very. And, and I think we heard, we heard from a, a, a broad swath of our community about this. So, um, I just hope that we could stay on top of that into the new year. And it obviously is gonna be an incremental work and process over time, but I just don't want to lose sight of that. And then really, really quickly, um, uh, I just wanted to make some general points before we, we jump into the new year with two new colleagues who are both here. And thank you both for being here. Um, you should be taking one last break before, before you're here. But, um, I, I think, I think every once in a while, it, it pays to take a step back and look at how we, how we operate. And I would, I would just say, uh, Madam Chair and to my fellow and, and, uh, future board colleagues that I, I ran in twenty fifteen in part because I saw a board that, and this is no criticism of Mr. McCarthy at the time, but I saw a board that, um, reacted to instruction from the county administrator at that time. And, and we have, uh, we had a great county administrator then. We've got a great one now, um, who serves our board very well. But what I would like to say as a general principle going forward, Madam Chair and to my colleagues, um, to the extent we can become more strategic and forward-thinking in tackling big issues before the county and be, and minimizing how reactive we are. Subdivision, uh, thing that came up recently is a perfect example. I'd like to see peppered throughout our agendas, um, throughout the year, um, sort of key, key touching points that I think we all agree and Ms. Smith has cited one already about building renovations. I think we need to constantly revisit the question of, uh, our county-owned buildings and what the plan is to fix them. Um, obviously balancing our fiscal responsibilities, um, vis a vis additional expenditures when we have this courthouse project hanging over us. Public utilities, infrastructure, we heard from Ms. Grimsley, um, where REC has created some problems. I think we need to stay on top of REC and what our county infrastructure looks like and what this board can do, um, to protect our county infrastructure on the, on the electrical service front. Um, but expanding that discussion on an ongoing basis to include, um, water and sewer functions within the county. I always talk about the town, uh, Town of Washington having water and sewer and Sperryville having sewer and then schools having wastewater treatment. And it just doesn't add up to me that these wouldn't be, um, operated in some sort of coordinated way to gain economies of scale and, and cost reductions for ratepayers. Um, big question that I think we need to wrestle with right off the bat in the new year, um, revenue. What are revenue, what additional revenue sources are we missing? I think on this front, without going into too much detail, I think we do need to hear from the revenue commissioner to talk about land use enforcement. We, we continue to hear anecdotally that, um, there are glaring examples of people who are benefiting from land use taxation, but perhaps they're not meeting the requirements. So I think we need to hear from the revenue commissioner to make sure that our enforcement on land use is robust and is being carried out in, in a, in a consistent and effective way. Fire and rescue, both, um, on the financial front and on the operational front. I think we need to think in a more coordinated, long-term way. I've said that I think the fire levy body, um, has, uh, run its course in terms of usefulness. I would like to see financial oversight of our volunteer fire and rescue, um, reimbursement, reimbursements, um, watched over by the board, um, instead of having this, um, um, this fire levy body in between. And then operationally, particularly in light of Chester Gap and Warren County and that now, um, failed, but hopefully soon to be recovered agreement. Um, what is our operational plan for our system as a whole? Um, I mentioned subdivision, sub, the subdivision ordinance. I think we need to stay on top of that. Uh, Ms. Donahue and Ms. Comer and I were down at the VACO conference at the homestead. And I really like the phrasing of, of related affordable housing, instead of calling it affordable housing, housing that is affordable. Um, I think that's a question we still need to wrestle with here. And I think again, like all of these themes doing it on, ongoing basis, instead of waiting for something to happen and reacting. And then I think we need to do a better job of getting, um, updates from our representatives, um, at outside institutions. I'd like to hear more about, um, our chair's work, um, at the regional commission and what, um, what benefits the regional commission might bring to us. And if we're, if we're missing any opportunities to use the regional commission to our advantage, what are those? And what can we do better? I believe, um, Madam Chair, that, um, one of your constituents now serves on the Laurel Ridge, um, board. I believe that's Mr. Fairhurst. I think we need, we, we're fortunate. We get to hear from Ms. Comer all the time about Laurel Ridge, but I think we need to hear from him more regularly. Um, and also from the congressman, I'd like to hear more. Um, it seems like something had happened on courthouse funding, but I've, I've, I've not heard anything the last couple of weeks. So I think better, consistent communication out of the congressman's office would be helpful. And I've already addressed what I think is a critical need for very, very granular, specific updates on our broadband infrastructure with regular operational updates. So I appreciate, um, you indulging me there, but I think these are all broad, both broad and very specific touch points that we need to hit on a regular, ongoing basis so that we're not always in reaction mode. And that's no disrespect, um, to any of my colleagues. Um, it's just starting a new year. I think we, uh, we should do a better job of, of, uh, staying ahead of things through regular discussion and, and thinking through, uh, where we can improve on any of these fronts. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. Um, I brought it up before earlier, um, about data centers. And I think in terms of what Mr. Whitson was saying, um, for eye on the horizon, I just, I just don't know where the power's gonna come from. And we don't have that many people in our county, so our county looks attractive to put a power line through. There's not a whole lot we can sometimes do about that, but political noise is sometimes the best noise. Um, that's what I'll be watching from the sidelines, um, because it actually does worry me. Um, I understand they are powerful revenue generators for counties and so they're not going anywhere. Um, and I have heard constituents and other citizens of the county really concerned about it. So I. So I definitely think it's something to keep an eye on. I also think, and I have brought this up before, and I think it's, it's just a discussion in terms of affordable housing. And we have talked about this, but the ADU thing, and Ms. Smith had pointed out that, you know, and I think that, I think you're right. Every every application that's come before.
We've never denied a single one. We've approved every single.
And so I think that moving forward, you know, just kind of giving that, and I'm not suggesting we need to change the ordinance, but giving it some thought and consideration in terms of comp plan, planning is a really good thing for three reasons. The first one is is that if it were to be a by right thing, it would immediately grant a property right to landowners. And landowners love gaining, not losing property rights. The second thing is is that it would be an immediate revenue generator for the county because people would exercise it immediately. And the second thing is, or the third thing is, is that it it would, and I think that it would, create housing for local people. So I just think it's something, as the, as everybody feels the pinch and as we navigate this, I think that because of the constraints on ADUs, them needing to be two hundred and fifty feet from a house and the things that make an ADU distinctive, it could be really an interesting discussion as this iteration of the comp plan gets discussed. And I know that I've brought it up, but I do, I I just think that it's something worth continuing that discussion on.
That's awesome.
And the last thing I wanted to say is that I have really loved working with all of you and Mr. Fraser, who I found quite funny, genuinely. And it's really been an honor and a privilege to serve my county where I grew up. And I'm not going to go anywhere, but thank you all for being so honest and willing to work. And I agree with what Ms. Smith said, you know, we, we've had some serious disagreements, but I actually believe intention on a board. I don't want five people going the same way all the time because taxes would be like they are in Arlington.
Good point.
So, you know, attack ideas, not people. And I think that, you know, we do that pretty well. So thank you all, and I want to thank these two sitting out here for stepping up and serving the county in the future here. So thank you.
Thank you. Staying in line with your ADU conversation, I have heard from people that they expect that the ADU by right will happen this year. And that will, I mean, with what Mr. Whitson said, January would be a good time to start talking about ADUs. I know I brought up Page County and lodging and income and trying to find a way to to bring in more income to the county. And I do believe that ADUs may be the way to do it. And it sticks kind of sort of with tourism to to help us out with events that happen in the county that people have to go outside of the county to find a room. Maybe there's some way to take advantage of that situation. But I do, I look forward to those kind of conversations early next year. I would be remiss if I didn't mention the Department of Social Services has the angel tree up if you want to help a child in the county or I think it might be an adult as well. You can go there and pick a angel off a tree. The sheriff has shopped with a deputy. I got to do that one year and it is just such an event to watch the children pick basically what they want out of Walmart. And the amount of goods that get put on the buses with the kids is just phenomenal. And they bring them back and they wrap them. And then it's a big special breakfast with all the gifts and the kids. It's just heartwarming. And what else am I missing? Ah, the little Washington Christmas parade and event, I mean, to me is Norman Rockwell at its finest. And just want to make sure people have that on their calendar for Sunday, December seventh, I believe. Yep.
If I could follow up on your DSS plug, if you may have seen in the monthly report, Bonnie worked with Gail. There's a new page on the county website where people can now just donate to various DSS missions, angel tree and others. And I'm not sure if she made a link on the main page in a story, but there are QR codes, I think, at like the angel tree and various other places where you can go and then use a credit card even if you want to pay a fee, a small fee.
And the food pantry will do, again, what they did for Thanksgiving for Christmas dinners. So if anybody's interested and you have a little spare time, even if it's an hour or two hours, I handed out the milk. That was my job and that's why I'm saying it is so well laid out and planned. Somebody yells out what each person, what each car needs and there's like six of us putting together that cart. So it's not hard work, but it does remind you what the holidays are about.
Great.
All right. Recess until seven PM.
Don't disappear, you two. You've still got one more meeting.
I have a good snack tonight.